I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now move to silence, please. Thank you, please have a seat. If you have a cellphone on you, please make sure that it's silent, vibrate, or shut off. Roll call.
Karlovic?
Here.
Reifner? Reese?
Here.
Roches?
Here.
Ister?
Here.
Alright, Miss Socker, HGTV.
So, sorry for the dim light at the moment, but we're gonna have to see a video. I wanna say that about two weeks ago, a very enthusiastic citizen of Sunbury came to my office and had a wonderful idea. I had not heard of this. She said, "If you've ever heard of the HGTV TV show Hometown, they wanna do a hometown takeover. And they wanna come to a small town, a population less than 40,000, and do a complete six-episode series where they do some makeover, some renovations in that town. Because they know how much those kinds of renovations can start a movement toward community and economic development. And so, I happen to know a videographer and friends with him on Facebook, so I messaged him right away. And then he called me on the phone, and we're on the phone. I said, "Are you in?" He says, "He's in." And we got started. And so, in a matter of about 10 days or so, this video got put together. And so, I'd like to show that to you now.
Dear HGTV, are you looking for the perfect small town with a lot of potential that needs some help getting back on its feet? Think Sunbury. Sunbury, Pennsylvania has an amazing history. Fort Augusta was built here in 1756 to offer protection to settlers during the French and Indian War. Sunbury was the first frontier of what would eventually become the United States. Sunbury is located where the two branches of the Susquehanna River come together. And the scenic Susquehanna has defined our community for almost 250 years. Sunbury was formally established in 1772 as the county seat for Northumberland County. The historic county courthouse, built in 1865, is located downtown. Thomas Edison chose Sunbury to establish his first electric power plant. In 1883, Edison illuminated the city hotel with the very first electric lighting system in the world. The hotel still stands and has been named in his honor. So, think Sunbury. Sunbury has beautiful, historic homes and businesses. Sunbury thrived as a home for manufacturing and industry. Sunbury was the regional hub of shopping, commerce, transportation, and invention. And it's time now to reinvent our town. So, think Sunbury. In the 1970s, manufacturing slowed down. Many local businesses closed entirely, and many jobs were lost. A new shopping mall opened nearby, and downtown stores suffered. People moved away to find work. Many of our beautiful old homes sat empty and fell into disrepair. Which means, we could really use a hometown takeover. So, think Sunbury. Yes, we have empty storefronts and some tired old houses, but that means we have a lot of potential. There's so much energy in our town and our people. In 2022, we'll be celebrating Sunbury's 250th anniversary. So, HGTV, it's the perfect time for a hometown takeover and makeover of Sunbury. It's just what we need to restore Sunbury to its full glory.
So, think Sunbury!
So, I wanna recognize Fran Zartman there in the back. She's the one with the big crazy ideas.
Crazy!
Caleb Sheen from here. Caleb, he was our young person representing on the video. And I wanna thank Steve Patterson and Patterson Media Team for doing the training. And also have to thank my mom and dad for their cameo appearance at the end. But the good thing about this, now that this video is made, I mean, that's clearly a very small chance. There's thousands. I mean, their website crashed the day that we were submitting it. We panicked because the website had crashed. But we figured it out and we got our submission in. So, it's a really small chance of getting selected, but you can't win if you don't play. But the better part of this is, this video can be modified a bit to be used as a promotional video. We really wanna show Sunbury as a place that you can come and raise a family, and live, and have a wonderful life in a small town, and also come and start or grow a business. So, that's what that's gonna be about, and that "Think Sunbury" is gonna be our theme, our mantra. Just "Think Sunbury." Looking for a great place to live, "Think Sunbury." Looking for a place to start a business, "Think Sunbury," 'cause we're awesome. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Alright, now if I can have Macy Carper, Lisa Keely, Brianna Henne, and your parents come forward. Alright. So, I'm not sure if, well, most of you should be aware by now, because throughout the Shikomie School District, the daily items, so forth, on January 24th, there was an incident at the car wash on Front Street. And these three girls, Macy, Lisa, and Brianna, they were out on their run, and they heard some cries of help coming. Then they went to look into what was happening. They found a lady that was in dire need of some assistance and help. Instead of doing what most teenagers and young people do, which would be just go the opposite direction, turn a blind eye, these three young ladies approached this incident and found out what was going on, and they helped this lady. They went out of their way with their courageous actions to move this vehicle, unpin this lady, which we later found out was a former district teacher for Shikomie. And I just think this is admirable of their actions, and the city of Sunbury accepts and acknowledges them for everything that they've done. So, in doing so, I'm going to present these three with a paring word. And start off as Macy, Lisa, and Brianna has made a positive contribution to the community with their selfless courageous actions of heroism. On January 24th, 2019, former district teacher Anne Hollenbeck was accidentally pinned inside the automatic flood zone car wash by her vehicle. Cries of help were heard by the Shikomie School District students and long-distance runners, Macy Carper, Lisa Keely, and Brianna Henne. Macy jumped inside the vehicle and was able to reverse it while Lisa and Brianna assisted to free the former teacher. And the city of Sunbury commends them all for their heroic and caring actions that helped save another person's life from the possibility of serious injury. And on that, the city of Sunbury is thankful and helps you continue to do this in the future to help people. Thank you. So, Macy Carper. Let me scoot behind you here. Brianna Henne?
Yes.
And Lisa Keely. Please do not forget these wonderful things, right? Oh, alright. Now, if you all could just tell us a little bit about what happened with the incident.
Okay, so, usually we are, we always run together, like no matter what. I'm sure everybody usually sees us. So, we were running that day. I didn't feel well, so I decided I'll run like five. Usually we go five minutes less. And we just so happened that like I would turn around earlier than them two. And then they decided they're gonna turn around with us. It was just kind of a coincidence. And as we were coming back that way, we realized, and usually people cheer for us, so we're like, okay, she's cheering for us. It's kind of funny, because we're like, this girl's going crazy about us just running, but then we're like, okay, she looks like she needs some help, and that's when we decided to help her out.
Alright, thank you again. And this is a great beginning to our "Be Kind." Alright, Black History Month for the month of March, or February. Whereas Black History Month is observed in February of each year to honor the contributions of African-Americans. And whereas Black History Month is a call of each and every person to reflect on the cultural, scientific, political, and economic contributions of African-Americans, so that we remember the past and learn from it, so that we can build a better and more prosperous future for all. And whereas Black History Month is an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of African-Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on future generations. It is also a time to commemorate the countless contributions of African-Americans, many of whom lived through segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination. And whereas during Black History Month, all are encouraged to reflect on past challenges and successes of African-Americans in order to improve our society, so that we all can live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice, and now therefore be resolved that I Kurt Krolovich, Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the City of Sunbury Council members and citizens, do hereby declare the month of February 2020 as Black History Month. And now we have our Be Kind proclamation. Whereas the kindness campaign is about intentional acts of kindness. And whereas the kindness campaign will take place during the week of February 10th through the 14th, with each day having a different theme relating to intentional acts of kindness in the community. Monday, February 10th is a compliment or appreciate someone. Tuesday, February 11th, clean up something that isn't yours. Wednesday, February 12th, say hello to someone new. Thursday, February 13th, post a positive message on social media. And Friday, February 14th, wear Be Kind apparel or red clothing. And whereas being kind can lower your blood pressure by releasing a hormone oxytocin, which protects the heart by reducing blood pressure, being kind can increase serotonin production, which is a chemical that helps you to keep calm, heal injuries, and create feelings of happiness, and can help you live a longer life. And whereas during Be Kind Week, all are encouraged to participate by conducting intentional acts of kindness. And now therefore be it resolved that I Kurt Krolovich, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the City of Sunbury Council members and citizens, do hereby declare the week of February 10th through the 14th of 2020 as Be Kind Week. And that was in reference to all the Be Kind flyers and postings you're seeing around town lately. Is there any audience comments on agenda items only at this time? Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 6th, 2020, and January 13th, 2020. Approval of the reports of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, Police Pension Board, and the Plenary Commissions. Do I have a second?
Reese?
Yes.
Roches?
Yes.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Alright, Chief?
Just before you guys vote, over the last month, we've had two promotional tests. One candidate was eligible for sergeant, one was eligible for the position of corporal. Travis Bremagen passed all his required testing. We still have to do the required testing of the civil service. They both, and Officer Slack both passed their written test, oral evaluation, and their supervisor evaluation, which was mine. So, at this time, I ask the council to vote on promoting Corporal Bremagen to sergeant and Officer Slack to the position of corporal. They'll be at the next council meeting for their official pinning with their families. Officer Slack is currently at a supervisor's school right now. And Corporal Bremagen, it seems to be sergeant, Bremagen had other obligations with his kids tonight. So, on the 24th, he'll be here for their official pinning, but it'll be effective immediately tonight. It's part of the new rebranding of our department and also the command staff going forward.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the promotion of Corporal Bremagen to sergeant and Officer Slack to corporal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roches?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Removal two meter parking spaces. So, my office received a letter regarding 361 Market Street, and they're requesting to have two parking meters on South Forest Street between H&R Block and 361 Market Street removed. Removal those meters is necessary for you to access the parking lot of 361 Market Street. This is not something that we're to vote on tonight. This is just to present the information to you, and you all should have a copy of this letter in your folder as well. Councilman Chris, since you're in code department, what would be the actual steps, so everyone knows, to go forward with this, if that's what they wanted to do?
With this?
Yes.
For code? Basically, it would have to go through us. I don't know whether it would be code.
Planning zone.
Oh, they think we're gonna go through, they're talking about the building itself. So, the building itself should have already gone through planning zoning for the use. Depending on that, they could come back and make the request for the parking lot. And then Mike, it would go to you from there, as far as, if it hasn't already, going to you. So, you have nothing on 361 Market? Okay, so as far as use, it would all go through that, and then we'd come back. The council, at that point, it's all done with Mike?
So, is that also landlocked?
It's the corner. It's the corner, right?
I can see that.
If you can help clarify a little bit, Macy?
Yeah, sure. I'm glad to. I own that property, and I actually need to be launching a business extension there. What I would say is, I don't know that the parking necessarily matters in what the building is, 'cause no matter what that parking lot is, landlocked because of the meters. So, there's just this broken ground there that can't be utilized. I mean, it could be potentially built upon, I guess, through code or things like that, but we just plan to use it for a parking lot, so.
So, it's not in use of what the building is? So, because you originally talked to me about it a while ago, and you weren't sure what the use was gonna be of that building.
Right.
And we had talked if the parking lot was gonna be used for the building, or potentially used for tenants, or used for what, but I don't know that that ever came about.
Well, that's probably the reason why the letter that I wrote to state in the business that it's going in there. But I don't know that that's necessarily relevant. If you think that's important to that, that's okay. But no matter what, that parking is landlocked, so.
Yeah, I would say to me, it was important to know that that building was an approved zoning use first, and then the parking of the building made sense. And then be able to take those spaces off at that point. And then to have a full plan of, you know, how you were gonna pitch the parking lot and all that.
Maybe I can jump in real quick. Megan, is the building zone, how is the building zone?
It's downtown commercial.
It's downtown commercial, okay. So, she's not gonna have to go through a zoning for this business?
Okay. Is it for use or anything like that?
For use, it should be okay.
I would have a certificate of occupancy.
Exactly.
At some point, I would have a certificate of occupancy.
And you're gonna get a certificate of occupancy after the approval for the, it's your plan to get a certificate of occupancy after you're granted approval to remove the two meters, or after we...
The order is honestly irrelevant, and that's not a huge issue.
Okay.
So, we can wait on the parking. It's okay. I just, I don't know that, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be pursuant to zoning or any sort of issues like that, no matter what use it is.
I agree. Legally, I agree. All I'd say is, you probably ought to have the occupancy permit first before we would vote to remove the meters, just for the sake of being practical.
Right, right. And when we're having some access issues, which now they're starting to do now that we're like doing some...
You mean for construction?
Yeah, we're getting ready to do that. Like, we're just removing some debris right now, but...
Do you need the parking meters removed for the purposes of the construction?
Well, it's a, there's no cutoff there, is there?
There isn't a cutoff. Now, because...
So, there has to be a cutoff, please.
So, for instance, we may be getting an HVAC service delivered, and so I would be able to get to the rear of the building with that. So, that will be one of the issues to be coming up pretty before necessarily everything is approved or certificate of occupancy won't come until everything's done. Now, there also will be building permits for certain items as well, so.
Now, I'm, sorry, I'm kinda catching up on everything on mine on this one. So, I remember why you came to me originally, because I was on the streets at the time. And I think it'll actually eventually have to go through Steve, because I don't know that those two spots are the only thing that are gonna be affected by it. Because, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, to have a parking lot, you have to have so many feet on either side as well, as far as pulling out space. So, I remember that was why we also needed to wait. So, I think you would have to go through actually Josh as well, to make sure that they are okay with it, because I actually think there'll be four spaces that you would take away, not two.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, go whatever, go with the cost of the price.
So, can we, just to keep it clear, can we table the motion, table any motion, table any action, I guess, on pending the discussions between the back and the streets and/or code, and we'll go from there?
Okay.
Maybe any drawings at all yet?
Of, no.
The entrance?
No, the entrance won't be changing, but...
The parking area?
The parking area.
The drop curb to go into the parking lot?
I don't have diagrams of the drop curb.
You'll need all that for Steve.
Okay. Alright, okay.
Thank you. Councilman Reese, 448 Market Street.
This is just an update. Last meeting, we had someone come about trying to change the use of 40 Market Street from commercial to residential. Basically, just letting everyone know that that was denied. We don't want people bringing it to a vote or anything, but since it was part of the meeting, it was denied. Basically, it doesn't pass zoning. Mike reviewed it, and there's multiple things in there, so to be able to change, it doesn't pass, so have to appeal if it was gonna go further. I don't know, Mike, if you wanted to add anything, but pretty much it on there.
Pretty much covered. Thank you.
Councilman Roches?
Alright, so 440 Market Streets where the current police department is, I know this is a hot topic right now. What I'm asking, and just correct me if I'm wrong, just I'm just coming on board here, that I'd just like to know the numbers, just to keep that place where it's at, just so the taxpayers know what it would cost. Now, I'm just asking, are there any numbers out there that I'm not aware of right now?
Are you prepared at all to go through everything again?
Well...
What I'm, but like the numbers, the...
You're looking for like the opinion of probable cost for renovating that building.
Correct, yes.
And I think that prior to getting to having an opinion of probable cost is whether or not that building is situated in a way that makes it feasible for a police station. And based on previous studies and experts, it is not. And so, pursuing a feasibility study which would involve architects and getting that opinion of probable cost would have to at least have met the criteria for having appropriate access for a police department.
So, what, I guess my question is like, what is the exact holdup? Like, what is, I mean, I remember you saying there's guidelines, but guidelines are different from requirements.
You mean, holdup in what?
I mean, so why, why...
Why doesn't it mean that the park...
Yeah, why doesn't, yes.
So, I mean, you would do that.
Go ahead. I have some of the pieces there.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a couple. Obviously, it's multi-level, which there was recommendations not multi-level as part of the requirements. Rear egress, there's no rear egress? Actually, probably Brad's probably the best person.
Yeah, I mean, the building itself, again, when I spoke a couple weeks ago, it's temporary. It was a temporary fix that just kinda got away from us back in 2003. There's a lot of, right now, there's safety issues alone. There's no rear egress, where it's too open to be a police department. There's no privacy for between victims and suspects, stuff like that. The evidence vault itself is not ideal. The setup we have right now, it's not ideal at all. It's open. If you come into our police department, you smell the drugs, you smell everything. There's no ventilation in that building. We, you know, there's a lot of issues that right now, the building is deteriorating to the point where now we're kinda forced to come, we gotta move, we gotta get out of there.
But besides those things that could be renovated...
Correct.
The situation there on Market Street with not enough parking and how you bring a, somebody into the department...
For us to actually use that building for a true police department, you're gonna have to buy various, tear that down, buy the back end of the market house, tear that down. I just don't think that's, there's no way we can do that. To make that a true police department building?
Yeah.
That's, two things that would need to be done. And I just, I just don't see that.
Well, I'm just, I guess, I'm not against or for anything. I just say the taxpayers, like I said, I already talked to Kevin Chu about the financial part of it. Like, I have the money right now, my budget, because of certain circumstances to cover it, whatever we have. I guess, I'm just saying for the taxpayers' sake, for them to know what it would cost, for them to know, like, let's say X amount of dollars, I think, I just think in my good conscience, like, they should have that number. Now, whether it comes back, wherever it may be, then they know. But I just think, as a taxpayer, they should know that number.
We've had...
So, Mike, my question is, Councilman, why would you wanna spend $2,600 of taxpayer...
Taxpayer.
Or more than $2,600 of taxpayer money, which is coming out of your street department, which could be used to improve the streets, might mean quality of life for the citizens itself, when we already have a feasibility study that says that building is not prime for a police department?
That was 10 years ago.
That was 10, I'm not saying...
And Chief, can you review the feasibility study?
Well, I mean, just, I did a real recap. I mean, in 10 years, nothing has changed from that study. That's the problem. Nothing has changed to make that fit into a police department. It's just, it's just not ideal.
Right, so I have some of the feasibility study things. I went back and looked at it. So, the 3,800 square feet on one floor is not nearly big enough for a police department. And a police department should be on one floor, so that you're not having to move detainees up and down floor levels. Right now, there's no parking available on site. The third floor is limited to mechanical. It cannot be used for storage or occupancy. The location and construction of the structure, along with relationship and access to building, severely degrades the security of uniformed and non-uniformed employees, of general public, and prisoners. The other things that they found, of course, that would have to be fixed would be like, there's no emergency power, there's no appropriately marked exits, those kinds of things. So, again, in that feasibility study that was done in 2009, the overall recommendation from the architects that studied it and was that there should be a building, that that building was not gonna be feasible, no matter how you renovated it, it was not gonna be feasible to be a police department.
And just, just to add to that, since 2009, since this study was done, we've had several architects come through that building, just trying to say, every single one of them said, "This is gonna be, it's like impossible to not even look at it." I know one of them, somebody walked, Mr. Betts was back there. He walked through it. There's a lot of recommendations from him, and he's just like, I think it's his money, he's blowing it away.
And also, the, so the original feasibility study that you said you talked to Kevin, that's the $2,500. That gets you nothing other than them saying, "Yes, this building could work for a police department." No, this couldn't. To go through, to do the full, to figure out, if you wanted to give the cost, you're talking closer to $6,000 at that point. That's not the $2,500. So, then you'd be taking on an even larger cost to be able to figure out what we already know the answer to.
I mean, we're saying all these numbers, like, we keep on saying, I'm like, I don't wanna say like I'm pro or against or anything like that, but I just say for a tax, I mean, you're talking about, you're saying you're wasting taxpayer money at $6,000, but if it's gonna save, like I said, I don't know. I don't know.
But no matter how you renovate it, it's not feasible for a police department.
We started this back in 2008 when we really got moving. I think it was when former Chief Miller was here. When he first got here, we started, like, started the talk about moving. And even back then, they were like, "You gotta get out of that building." I mean, every chief we've had come up, from the PA Chiefs or any of them, have come up and said, "This is not ideal. You guys gotta get out of here. It's not safe for everybody." Not just the guys in the department, or the police officers, or the civilian staff. It's just not safe all around, the way that building is laid out.
So, they've had an evaluation and a report from the city insurance advisor, Denny's Sports. That was in April of 2008. They had a consultant come in, because that report recommended a consultant coming in and taking a look at it. And so, there was Dave Hall, who did an assessment of the facility based on its police operations capabilities and noted that the accessibility and other problems were not gonna make it feasible to be a police department. So, expert opinions, you can hire... So, expert opinions, we hired these people, we paid these consultants, and the determination was, it was not a good option to pursue.
So I mean, I'm, because I'm just throwing options, I guess, I'm, I know, like, everything costs money, and that's what we're trying to do, save money in the long run. But did we ever contact people next door, what they wanna do with their building? Like, cost of that, and so on and so forth down the road, because, I mean, right now, we're looking at one point one million dollars, cheapest at Chestnut Street, at Chestnut Street right now.
And it's far below all other surrounding municipalities that have, or are going to be building a police department?
And how much, how much the money difference in Danville, how much income do they have coming compared to what we have, like, what's their budget like, those things. I mean, like I said, my biggest thing, you gotta, like I said, I know it's six thousand dollars, yes, it's a lot of money, but we also gotta stop trying to pass the buck off on the next generation of people, we're talking about a thirty-year loan, like, most everyone in this room's gonna be dead by that time, we have that thing paid off. I mean, it's the truth, and we don't wanna accept the truth, but I hate to say it, but it's true.
Even if, even if you gave the money to the community and you decided to renovate, we cut costs and we spent five hundred thousand instead of a million. We're basically just band-aiding the situation that they've been band-aiding for twenty years, because always the plan was to move, excuse me, to move somewhere else.
And we have better options already, better options already, David, that meet the police department's needs.
Well, I'm just gonna put up for a motion, you, like I said, your vote was.
Josh, before you do that, there was a comment made here about acquiring part of the market house and also the building alongside. What will that, Jody, see if those properties even, uh, can be purchased? I, I, I understand, but it's really easy to make a phone call and find out these properties we'd be purchasing, and the one we know, we're not doing the vote on, it'd be demoed, let's get some cost there, it'd be real easy.
We're still in the process, yeah, you're kicking the can down the road for a, for a project that's not, it's not gonna work. Market Street also was, was determined that location was not because of the parking.
I appreciate that, but at least give them some satisfaction.
Like I said, I mean.
So.
And you know, if you don't have the time to do it.
And like, these are the next phones. When I came into, when I came on to counsel, I was raising my hand, saying, we need to save the taxpayers' money, we need to rehab the current police department, keep them there. I didn't have half of this information that you have available to you, that was, it wasn't available to me then. But my mind changed, because I was able to see all the facts on this side of the table. That building is not feasible. In the last two years, we've been studying other properties, we submitted a committee, an official committee to do all this research. Right now, we're just circling around the same building, and we need to forget about this building as a police department. Maybe in the future, it can be something else, but it cannot be emergency services or a police department at that building.
I'd rather see that, the building next to it, we're talking about use of that, go towards a redevelopment authority project or potential future use to have them look through the termination of all the assets there, and go through that whole process, rather than continue to talk about it as a business, as a business.
We also have to look into all aspects of this project. It's not just creating a police department, it's also rebuilding our surrounding community areas that is blighted.
Or we're gonna, we're gonna rebuild one to leave one there, because.
To repurpose it, to, to, it really does need to go to redevelopment authority, I think I agree with that. Um, the various property is not salvageable itself. So it, and making that lot, not just the various property, but also the, for forty Market Street, a big rely to deal with. I've already spoken to the redevelopment authority, we had a meeting in January, Pat Matt from, uh, the Housing Authority in Northumberland County was there, indicating that there could be money available at county level for demolition of that both properties, because of its location, it would probably be a, a higher priority for demolition than maybe some other properties in the county, uh, and they're looking for projects like that. So, um, that was kind of a thought process of, you know, I know there's a concern about what do you do with that property next, and, and that's the process, I think, and that's the potential to go through.
And I guess the joke's point two about the property in store, I mean, that was a conversation that we had at a committee level about potentially, cause Kurt, you were actually one of the ones first that said, tear down that property next. And even then, it still wasn't feasible because of the size and what you have to build on the requirement, it still is not feasible. But, I mean, in the end, you have the right to make any motion.
Well, if various is tore down, the police department can be rebuilt, and that would make the police department, the building itself more valuable with the lot alongside of it.
You're talking about, so for sale?
Yes.
I agree a hundred percent, that's a different, yes, that's a different conversation.
How much was, how much was the estimate to tear down various?
I don't have that.
Bree, can you speak on behalf of redevelopment authority right now?
I, we didn't actually get a full estimate, I know that, um, the code officers and, I don't know, Mike, Mike and Eric, they looked at it, um, we estimated it would be quite a sum of money, because it's landlocked, and so to go in, you'd have to do an environmental review. Mr. Betts, maybe you can, you help us out, because it was an astronomical number.
This is about two and a half, this is about two and a half years ago, I think, when we looked through this, and, and in order to take that down and equate the means to deliver convicts or criminals or whatever in that facility there, it, it was like two hundreds plus thousand dollars, it's like two hundred fifty thousand dollars to tear it down. And in order to do that, now you've gotta rebuild something up inside it. And, and the feasibility study, we didn't even have it all together, but the time that I walked through there and started checking off all that needed to be done, plus everything else, if we didn't have union labor to come in in there, we had a private sector, which you can't do, you have to go out and, and did publicly. It, it, it looked, it started looking a lot better to somebody else who laid out a whole brand-new mod system, put somewhere else in our community. I mean, the whole point of bringing criminals right to the center of town, too, was not conducive to building a community. Years ago, fine, I mean, look at, look at where we were years ago, that video is a perfect thing, the, the city thrived and bustled. Today, we need to bring people to the city with reasons for it, not, not to continue to use that. And that, that was my opinion, and after Kurt's recognition of it, and we talked with everybody at the police force, I didn't realize the conditions they were operating in were deplorable. I gotta put it that way, it was deplorable. So, and, and, and it's probably just a Band-Aid fixing it right now. So, the sooner you can put a million dollars, if that's all it is, one point one, to build another one, and put it on a, I'm sorry?
It's renovate, everyone thinks about building.
Okay, renovate, I mean, that seems over a thirty-year, I plan to be here for at least another thirty years. I got another thirty years left in me, but, uh, you know, you avatarize that over the cost alone, and, and it's, it's what the, the city needs, in my opinion. So, I think, I think if you go back and read through the record books and read some of the articles that are written about it, and just do a walkthrough, you'll, you'll understand exactly what's going on. That's my opinion.
And if, I mean, as a business owner, two doors down from that, I've seen what it's like to have the prisoners walked in and out, and how it looks. It does not bode well to have restaurants and that, with, with the, with the property the way that it is. And knowing the various buildings as well as I do, it's completely deplorable, it can only be torn down, and that's gonna be a real mess to tear the whole thing down. The police department should not be in the center of our downtown, it is not a good look for us. There's, there's no criteria that you can bring up that would make me say, oh, great, let's have this police department right there. It's not safe for the officers, it's not safe for the public. As a business owner, I implore you, forget about that building. I was on council when we, we accepted the building. I almost think back and say, jeez, we should've just said no, because it's really in bad shape. Please, don't even think about this anymore, move on, pick one of the other places, and get it, get the police department taken care of, get these guys back in a place where they belong. And stop wasting time now, let's move on. We, we have enough criteria to know this, and I can tell you, the other business owners feel the same way I do. Nobody wants it downtown, nobody. So move on, please, I implore you.
Is there any other audience comments regarding the current police department building, keeping it there?
I just wanna say that when I go by the police department over in Northumberland, it's so respectable. And I think people, if we want them to respect our police department, we need to put them in a respectable building. Something that, that reflects who we want to run our city. And I just don't think where we're at will ever become respectable.
So, now it's up to you regarding what you wanna do with your feasibility study, Councilman.
Kurt?
Oh.
Uh, I, I worked in that building about eight or nine years ago for a very short time. If you ever have a fire in there, you don't get to be allowed. You can't get out, there's one entrance, one exit, that's it. It's not safe. If you're up on the second or third floor, you may as well kiss your world goodbye, if you're done. It is not a good building.
I mean, some of you are gonna disagree with it, this is how I feel, like I said, based on taxpayer money and things like that. Jim, you said about getting numbers, I mean, for our numbers on that building, not that building, but like, the building next door, what that would cost? I mean, I guess that's just how I feel, like I said, you might disagree with me, but we talked about moving it out of, out of downtown Market Street, but where it was in City Hall, it was in, it was in this building before it moved there. What was the complaint then to people, so?
So Councilman, can you please make a motion for what you would like us to do?
Josh, instead of making a motion, spending any money, let's make some phone calls this week.
Okay, so table the next meeting.
I'll write some numbers back.
Alright, thank you.
Make a motion to exonerate, the tax exoneration of three hundred ninety-four dollars eleven cents, throw out a second.
Second.
Ister, Karlovic, Reese.
Yes.
Precious.
Yes.
Make a motion, pay invoices and vouchers from the general fund of fifty-five thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars thirty-seven cents on liquid fuels. Eight, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents, throw out a second.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reese, Precious?
Yes.
Ister.
Ms. Ocker, repeat, replace cable?
Yeah, so, um, solicitor Reese did, um, provide a draft of the new, uh, cable television franchise ordinance. I forwarded it to SEC TV for their review prior to, to see if they were going to do or they were bit, before we proceed with the first reading of the ordinance.
Uh, my suggestion, I said maybe we should hold off on voting for this, until we see that the SEC TV has accepted our proposed changes. Once they accept it, then I would suggest we accept the, uh, franchise ordinance, only because if they wanna change two words, we have to go through the process again. So, they, they might accept it with one or two small changes, and which would be feasible for everybody, we don't wanna have to go back through that process. Now, if they come back and say, no, we don't accept it, that's another reason, if we're back to the drawing board, then you have to vote on what you want to do.
Okay, so just make a motion to table this until we hear back from them, if they're gonna accept it.
That's my suggestion.
You have a second?
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. Ms. Ocker, PD Department?
Yes.
So, I'm actually gonna jump in on this, cause I wanna make a motion on something, actually. So, um, with the conversation coming up about feasibility study of Market Street and, um, you know, starting that, and then Josh, you bring it back up, the current one, we've had other people coming to us with potential options for a police department. And we've gone through this process for over, you know, two years, now, over two years, and I think we're at a point where options may be feasible outside of the ones that we have, but we need to move forward on something. Um, and to actually make a decision, move forward, we've already started the funding process, but be able to move forward. Um, so what we've kinda talked about is putting out a process where, at this point, any new options to be studied, whether it be feasibility study, um, opinion of probable cost, anything else should be taken on by the property owners or by private funding. And then all blueprints, final developments, all opinion of probable costs, and everything to equal the Chestnut Street property, so that way we can evaluate. All options should be turned in by, what we say, April first, would be feasible according to, and all going through Straufer Bear. So that way, any potential opinion is all on equal playing ground, and everything is done. Um, so actually, that's my motion, is any consideration moving forward is paid for by, um, private funding or by owner. Um, and all must be turned in by April first.
Before you, wait, before, can I say something before you do that?
Sure.
Um, since I'm gonna be one of the
Yep.
persons, uh, entering a building, um, a fair playing field is, I agree that I would pay for, but what you just said before you, is that you pay so far eight thousand, I believe, to?
What do you mean?
I don't have my files, it's in the car, but for the building over here, how much have you spent so far?
About six.
Okay, so, cause I went and got the estimate from Rocky Bear to have drawings done for the Edison School, which I'm willing to work with the city, either trade or fifty percent donation, or something like that. Um, but I just wanna make sure that there is some type of even playing field.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, I, I don't mind what you're doing, I agree, but, um, if we waited this long, and, and the reports say that the building on Market Street is, I guess you were quoting feasibilities from two thousand and ten, so that's ten years later, well, whatever you guys do decide, that's positive, which will be good. But the point being, why rush a few months? Because it's gonna be thirty years of paying, so to get the best spot, and if other spots even besides what I'm gonna propose come in, and that, and they're better, I, I mean, you're putting it into under sixty-day window.
Yeah, it's, but it's based off of the condition of the current department, so though we cannot, as a city, continue to let them operate in that any longer, and keep delaying this process.
But is thirty days either way gonna make a difference, since you've been there for ten years already?
Yeah.
I'm just.
Mark, Mark, I, I appreciate it, but we've been doing this, we haven't been doing this for the last couple weeks, we've been doing this for two to three years.
I agree.
And I, and I, that's why, that's why we, the, the motion they're making, and when they talk to me about it, I said, I, at this point, I don't care if you build me a building in the middle of the river or a barge. We have to have a building, and it's, it has to, it's, now we're to the point where that's why the, the council's doing their due diligence and getting the funding for it, and going out and finding the funding for it. We're at that point, because we, for two and three years, we've been meeting every month to find out properties, and people came to us and said, this is what we have, and now we have other people like yourself willing to do something, well, that's why they're doing what they're doing, because we've been doing this for three years. Not, we didn't just start this.
But it sounds to me like the city's really been doing it for ten years, because that's, so, the fact is, it's not three years, it's ten years. Because that's why would you have paid for that last one, if you keep quoting how bad it is over there, so that's ten years. But all, I'm not, I'm not disputing, I think it's a great idea, but I know how the city works, and whatever the heck we end up with, it's gonna be there for the next fifty or sixty years, because nothing changes here. So if you spend a million to, which is great, and we can come in on budget, we gotta look at it, that whatever that money goes into, that police station will be there at least fifty years.
Alright, here's a couple of points of clarification. One, it's, um, that five or six thousand dollars was for preliminary design and a preliminary opinion of probable cost, not through the, the eight thousand five hundred dollar process we went through. It was just to what we did for the first three steps, which was preliminary design, preliminary of opinion of probable cost.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
Because those were, that was very close to what it ended up in the, in the final design, um, and opinion. Two, uh, there comes a point where the, the, the time for good ideas has passed, and as a leader, you have to make a decision, the best decision you can, based on the information you have. And I believe that the city is at that point, and to continue to kick this can down the road is a disservice, not only to our police department, but to the city itself. The city cannot move on with, with more community and economic development if we don't provide for the basic needs of a community, and that is a police force that is functional and that is respected.
I only mentioned thirty days.
And putting them in a police department that is fitting to, to them as officers, and a police department is number one. And when I look back, I was, I read, this weekend, I took the time to read council meeting minutes from two thousand and two to present. There were opportunities to put money into that police department, where it, they asked for two, a hundred and ten thousand dollars of CDBG money in two thousand and seven, and it didn't make the final list of CDBG money. There were opportunities after that, where CDBG money was available, and again, putting money into the police department did not make it on the list. I think it's completely ridiculous that you would kick this crap, this down the road any further.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion as your city administrator, I know I don't carry any votes, but that's my opinion.
And we also were assured that if a, if someone like, like, or like yourself, if you came forward right now with an option, that they can get this done in that timeframe.
Right. They told me they could.
Exactly. So, that's where we're at.
Can I jump in, George, if you don't mind? I think we're kinda arguing apples and oranges that move fruit, if you know what I'm saying. In that, Mr. Wahlberg's asking for thirty days, we're not gonna be adopting anything within thirty days. In that Mr. Wahlberg's asking for thirty days, we're not gonna be adopting anything within thirty days.
No.
And therefore, I don't know what we're fighting about.
I'm asking for a deadline of April first to make.
I understand, I understand. But the other thing is, just legally, as Councilman Precious has already brought up the fact that he's looking into doing a feasibility study on a city-owned property, okay? That would obviously be different than a privately owned company. And I'd ask for that caveat in your motion.
If that was to come back to?
If that was to come back
For another vote.
To another vote. Yeah, that would be a caveat, if, because it's a city-owned property, you can't personally provide the blueprints etc.
Put that caveat in the motion, as long as still, I can still put an April first deadline on that property.
You can put, any, I'm not telling you guys what you can't do, I'm just making legal suggestions.
So April first is your motion to make a final?
All things must be turned, all things must be turned in, and then we'll make a decision based off of that.
I think, we're already moving forward.
Yep, we're still moving forward, we're just talking about file. If we, 'cause we already have a council approval to move forward funding options for Chestnut Street, that has already been unanimously voted. So now it's, if the other ones wanna come in, April first, get everything lined by, in your motion, giving your caveat that everything else is privately funded, not city-funded, to give a caveat except for the building that we own, that.
Quick question, when, when does the, y'all brought up at the last meeting, the Woodbury property?
Yep.
So I'm curious if that's the same deadline for us?
Yeah, that also, yeah, my motion would carry that no further city money would be put into that property. It was only private funding as well.
I think you should really be looking at all options available, because the current option of Chestnut Street was supposed to be parking for the Albright Center.
Right.
And now you're gonna completely eliminate all the parking for another project that we've been sinking a lot of money into. And then what's your alternative for the parking?
When does that ever come up, Joe? 'Cause I'm on that board.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, that's.
I know it's been a conversation, but it was never promised.
I'm saying, it's not a bad thing to look at other options at this point, I'm thinking.
Agreed, but again, we've been doing this for.
But there's a finality to, to looking at options.
Unfortunately.
And quite frankly, I will back the police department one hundred percent if they decide to go on strike or file a brief against us at eight this summer. If a decision is not made by council regarding the current police department building and moving them.
I'm all, I think all of us want our police department to be taken care of.
We do not continue to keep pushing this back and keep saying we need to look at all options. We have been talking about this for two years, it has been publicized. For two years, people could have approached us, hey, what about my building? What about my building? We had people coming to us, we approached other people, people at that time did not want any consideration for us at that time. Now people are approaching us, and now people continuously want us to delay this for our public safety. The building itself is not safe to the public or our employees.
We also did have a public meeting promoting our options and allowing for public comment on those options, the current one, I think great people came.
So if I'm to understand this, even if you have a much better option, you're gonna just say?
Get it to us by April first.
You're just gonna say, forget about it.
We have a motion, we must do the vote.
Get it to us by April first.
What's that?
Get it to us by April first.
But why wouldn't you let the playing field, why wouldn't you look at it the same?
Because a decision has been made.
He made a motion, I said.
Okay, well, so throw the baby off the bathwater, right?
Karlovic, Reese, Precious.
Yes.
Yes.
They need a deadline.
They need a deadline, so everybody's got, you gotta.
Well, what's wrong with sixty days?
April first is the deadline to give us the information.
If they go off for two years.
Alright.
Yeah, it has.
Then why are you throwing stuff into it now?
Public agenda policy.
Because new buildings begin to build.
Let's stop, please.
New buildings for a building back there.
Out of the price gap.
There is a action within the Congress of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It has passed the House, it is currently in the Senate. It has not yet been brought to a vote in the Senate, to the best of my knowledge. That act, or proposed act, deals with notification of agency business. That if the agency has a website, the agenda must be posted regarding any meeting. And that would include the subject matter of the agency business that will, or may be the subject of deliberation or official action at the meeting. That must be published on the website no later than twenty-four hours in advance of the time of the convening of the meeting. Further, the agency would post the agenda also at the principal office of the agency and make available to individuals and attendants at the meeting copies of the agenda, which we already do. The notification of agency business is required under this rule that I already described, except in order to take any official action, except for emergency business, which would relate to an emergency meeting or emergency which arises at a regularly scheduled meeting with real or potential emergency involving clear and present danger to life or property. And business that arises within twenty-four hours before the meeting, which can be brought up if, is brought to the attention of the agency within twenty-four hours. And if it arises during the meeting, basically, the council may vote to allow it to be discussed at that time. Changes to the agenda would be allowed again on a majority vote of the council present voting during the meeting. That is the long and the short of this bill, that is before the Congress, the Congressional Senate at this time. And I needed to make everyone aware of that.
So the short of this is, if we do not have something posted on our public website or here at City Hall, twenty, at least twenty-four hours in advance of this meeting, not a single person can come up here and place something on the agenda, myself including, unless it is a majority vote, to include it onto the agenda at that time. This is to safeguard the public, so that they have the adequate information beforehand. At the next council meeting, we're going to be presenting a policy similar to this, just until the state law is passed.
At that point, I have two things I have to put on the agenda.
Okay, this is why we need the policy moving forward.
So, uh, two things. One is Jeff Lewis back there in the back? This has to do with a, a request for a sewer line from Mount Pleasant down to connect into the city sewer system, and it involves going around our levee. Because it has something to do with our levee, the city is asked to provide a letter of agreement for that work to be done. And Jeff, do you have any other details?
Basically, a letter of no objection. The, almost all the property that the levee system is state-owned property. So we have to basically let the state know that we have no objection to them going on the property that's considered flood control property, but it's still not gonna go through the levee. Going, not going through the levee is the best, is the best thing for the community, it's not gonna impact the levee at all, so by just signing this, you're allowing them to go around on state-owned property that is controlled by the flood control department. This is what it is. It's a letter of no objection saying, we agree with it.
Seconded.
Precious?
Yes.
Easter, Karlovic, Reese.
And the other thing was the janitorial services contract, we didn't put out a request for proposals. We have only received one proposal, and I'm going to open it now.
When does our contract expire, with the parallel? I know it already did, did we do an extension?
We did an extension until the end of this week.
Yeah, it is.
So we need to make a decision.
Yeah, they don't have any time to redo it.
So, for Cleveland City Hall, first floor, the monthly fee would be four sixty-three, the annual fee, five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six. And the City Hall second and third floors, it would be one thousand and nineteen dollars monthly, twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight annually. And then the police department at four forty, Market Street, would be two twenty-five monthly, twenty-seven hundred annually. I do have the figures for currently the police department. Is three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars per year. This quote proposal is twenty-seven hundred. The City Hall first floor, we've been paying seven thousand dollars a year. This one is five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six. And then for the second and third floors, I have to do some math, but it's all of these together. So that's ten thousand, two fifty plus three thousand, is thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty, plus another nine thousand, is twenty-two thousand. Two hundred and fifty plus another three thousand is twenty-four thousand, and it's half.
Yeah.
In the new proposal.
Is this the same company, just a new proposal?
No.
Or is this a new?
This is ServiceMaster, and we were previously with Sun Kong.
And I'm assuming the same, everything's the same quality of cleaning?
Yeah. We put in the, in the request for proposals, the scope of work to match what we have currently been using.
We're talking half on the second, third floor.
Half all around.
Over, yeah, over half all around, 'cause it's two thousand less on the first floor.
Is this the same company that county uses?
I don't.
No, the county uses Sun Kong.
Do they already?
This is ServiceMaster.
So, well, we need to make a decision, or our janitorial services will be city-controlled next week.
I would say, can we have Joel review that proposal? While making a motion to accept that price upon Joel's approval, and go through.
His recommendation. Oh, really? All right, seconded.
Easter?
No.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
That's good. Good night. For agenda items?
Yeah.
Alright.
I'm sure now.
Alright. Announcement, Sunday, the next Sunday New Year's Eve celebration meeting is actually tomorrow at five P M downstairs. Come out, talk to us about planning New Year's Eve this year. The next Hart and Hardest two and fifty anniversary is March twenty-sixth at six P M. The next council meeting is February twenty-fourth at six fifteen P M in these council chambers. Is there any audience comment at this time?
Yes, Robert Smither. Just on behalf of Lori Johnson from McQuiggin's, begging back from Hotel Edison, Chestnut Street Inn, Route sixty-one, and myself for the duck-in. I'm asking to, again, Lori, not to put her business on the street, was cited a second time for the noise ordinance. So I'm asking you to please take this as, I know myself, we're coming into the springtime soon. Would you please do everything you can do to get this ordinance taken care of, the noise ordinance that we talked about in the past? I know it's a lot of work on the solicitor's part to do this. If there's any way we could help, let us know. But this is gonna be an ongoing thing, and definitely a deterrent to the local businesses that wanna do music. Which, we're one of them, we're all doing it. Certainly, we seem to get a lot of people responding to it, but the L C B is saying, hey, we can hear your music off your premise, and that's a violation, so here's, you know, control.
In response, okay? We, my, my discussion with council previously was that I was not to work on this till after codification. Codification is not yet complete, however, it's all but complete. That being said, when I was contacted by Ms. Johnson last week,
Yes.
I immediately did the research necessary to get this thing done. I contacted the mayor and honestly, Jim Easter, and I don't know which one first, but both of them said, go ahead and get this thing started, so I, I got the research started. I have a plan as to what we have to do. But what you guys have to realize is that this is a big, huge undertaking, in that we're gonna, we have to advertise an ordinance, we have to subsequently adopt the ordinance, we have to send that ordinance along with a request to the P L C B. We have to identify a place for a public hearing before the P L C B, which would probably be here. The P L C B comes to town whenever they're going, well, please, and tells us whether or not they're going to approve or not approve what we're requesting. My understanding at this point is that council is going to request that they approve the entire city, the confines of the city, such that if they're gonna make it smaller, let them make it smaller. But we're gonna include the whole thing at this request, and DuBois just had that happen, okay? The city of DuBois just had that happen. In my research, I found two cities that actually got their city limits approved recently for three years. At that point, then, we have to institute our ordinance, which will be enforced by our police. Point being, it's not gonna be done tomorrow.
No, no, I know that.
But we, I have everything started, it's all ready to go. Hopefully for next meeting, I will have an ordinance ready for our first greeting. The meeting after that, they would have the second reading, and then we'll get it off it, send it off to the.
That'd be fantastic, that's all right. I know it's a new law, I bet it is.
Right, it's something, I didn't even realize how big of a process it was.
Turn it down. See, that's the problem, if they can hear it, it's not what it is. For those of you that don't understand, all they have to do is hear the music off your property. It's, there is not a bar anywhere that would not get cited for this. It's one of those laws that just makes no sense. So I appreciate, I do know, I did read it, it's a lot of work, but I think it's worth it in the long run, 'cause it's just a.
It was a matter of getting the plan together, we got the plan together, I think we're good to go.
And I knew the codification had it held up. We were all just wondering. Thank you, you appreciate it very much.
I'd like to speak to everybody in the White House about an incident that happened to me this weekend, this past weekend, to congratulate the way the system works within the city. So I get a phone call, early morning, that, from Mike Rhodes. And we had an issue because someone heard an alarm go off in one of my rental properties, the tenant wasn't there. It escalated to an emergency action where the fire police showed up, they blocked off the street in a precaution to save possibly lives, because they had tested O two or C O two coming from the building that might have been excessive. I get the phone call, and within minutes, I was down there, and I said, hey, timeout, guys, you don't really need to break in, let's go in. I called the tenant, the tenant's not there. But what I wanna say is, as a landlord, there are rules set in place for us to abide. Those are, provide the city with who lives there, how to get in touch with somebody in the event of an emergency, act upon the emergency, and take it to home. Within twenty minutes, it was solved and over and done with because the system worked. If I wasn't around, or the next person, if Mike didn't know who the landlords were in the community, I gotta say that, you know, thanks to Mike and thanks to the way the system worked, it was over and done with, and everybody got on with their lives. Had it been a catastrophe, had it been a gas line, you know, it was a sewer line in the basement, then the plug came off, and the sewer gases were reading false readings inside the building, and they notified it. So, you know, these, these are why we as landlords, you know, you, you put your hands up, you say, no, I've had enough of the rules and regs. But, you know, you get through it, and you fill out the paperwork, and you follow through, it saves not only your property, but the worst thing I was worried about was my tenant, had he died and nobody could have got in there, that's what I, the worst went to my mind first. Safety first, and then follow the rest. So, thank you, Mike, thank you for your efforts to be who you are and be out there with the community and the landlord team, 'cause I enjoy it, I enjoy being able to work like that. I'm glad it hit my well. So this is, this is, I'm thanking you guys for the system that it worked.
I also wanna add, I don't want Brad nor the fire department to go unrecognized either, because they were there too. And they're dumb guys.
Well, I said fire police too.
Fire department, fire police, they were all there. It was a, it was a, it was a group, oop, sorry. It was a complete group effort with a happy ending.
Great. Any other audience comments tonight?
Here's your sticker.
Alright, thank you, we're coming out of this meeting.